Everybody and welcome to the Delnart County Board of Supervisors meeting this day, Tuesday, June 26, 2018. We are returning from closed session. Liz, is there anything to report out?
No reportable action.
Okay. At this time, I'd like us to pause for a brief moment of reflection. Mr. Serena, can you please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, is there any new employees to introduce? Good morning, Sheriff. How are you today?
I'm doing well. How are you?
We're doing terrific.
Thanks.
You know, pretty uncomfortable with you this close as the podium been moved closer to us today or something? This is...
We can hug if that would break the ice.
It would break the ice.
I come with good news. I'd like to introduce you to four of our newest additions at the Delnart County Sheriff's Office. Two will be correctional officers and then two deputies and we'll quickly go through the swearing-in ceremony as some of their family members are here to participate.
Great.
With that, I'd like to call Michael Gardner and Michael McIntyre. Michael McIntyre was born in Spokane, Washington. His family moved to Delnart County in 2001. He attended schools in Delnart County and graduated Delnart High School in 2013. He entered the Army that summer and completed three years as a combat engineer. Michael chose a career in law enforcement to serve the community he lives in. And with that, I will move on to Michael Gardner. He was born in Crescent City, graduated Delnart High in 2000. His dad and uncle are both retired from law enforcement, so he wanted to pursue a career in law enforcement. Michael went to work with corrections at Pelican Bay State Prison and later worked at Borrow Boys Ranch until it closed, and he is now one of ours. If you have any questions, they'd be more than happy to answer them.
I think a personal speech would be pretty nice this morning, don't you, Sheriff?
There are more doers, less talkers.
Nothing wrong with that.
Just want to make sure you're welcoming them aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, I'd like to call Stephanie Gulick and Travis Jolly, please. Stephanie was born in Oakland, California, grew up and attended schools in the Bay Area. She attended Solano Community College and then in 2005 joined the Army. After completing required training in the service, she moved to Delnart County and attended CR and also SOU in Ashland and obtained her criminal justice degree while working at Juvenile Hall. She transferred to jail corrections. She's been with us for a period of time and is now on a path towards becoming a deputy, currently assigned to court security, and our hope is in that less than a year from now she'll be attending the Basic Academy at College of the Redwoods. Travis Jolly, born in Crescent City and graduated in 2016 from Sunset High School. Modified schedule to accommodate his job. Travis worked for Hambro as an equipment operator before putting himself through the Law Enforcement Academy at College of the Redwoods. Travis chose a law enforcement career to give back to the community he was raised in. His dad will be pinning his badge while his nine-month-old son, Jackson, looks on. And backing up to Gulick, her 10-year-old son, Jayden, will pin her.
Wow. Awesome.
So we'll get through the ceremony of their oath and then if you have any questions, as always, they'd be more than happy to entertain those. With that, I would like you to both raise your right hands and repeat after me. I'm going to go really small and slow on these sentences. There's nothing worse than we've seen the oath office where it goes a little too long and then people get tripped up in the words. We're going to make it easy on you. You ready? Loosen up. Okay. This is recorded forever. Everybody's going to be able to see this for the rest of the time. You ready? All right. I state your name.
I, Travis Jolly.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Deputy Sheriff.
Deputy Sheriff.
Congratulations. Families are welcome to come up. Very good. Good work. Congratulations. Next. I know you know how this works.
How you doing?
Good one. Feel free to sit down. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your service to our community. At this time, I'd like to request any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead to our 10:05 timed item, which is public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment today? Okay. Seeing none? No worries. Don't be shy. Come on up. Time's wasted.
All right. Eileen Cooper, Delnart County.
Good morning, Eileen.
Good morning. I am concerned that we aren't approaching a comprehensive water strategy in this county that can sufficiently address climate change. Recently, you sent a letter last meeting to McGuire.
We.
We. Now, that's the issue here. I don't think this board is being sufficiently educated with regard to these kinds of matters. I see singular letters coming up written by the Natural Resources Committee, but I see these letters coming forward to you as well-formed opinions without sufficient background information to educate the board. The reasonings behind, let's take the groundwater issue, that our well data is wrong. Well, so what do I do? I go and I contact the water department here that has been in conversation about this issue, and lo and behold, there's a request from Water Resources that we don't keep our water logs in chronological order, which handicaps this county for understanding what our actual groundwater problems are. So that's a piece of vital information that should have been shared with you. I am worried that there are opinions being coming forward that don't have sufficient background information so that this board can make educated decisions on their agendas. And this is not a little problem. We are facing climate change. We think we're going to get out of it easy. I don't, sure, I think this county needs to set priorities, agriculture uses, we do have to know how much agriculture users are pumping. We absolutely do have to have meters on those big users. We have to make hard decisions. What are the, not just the city that we can't water, Front Street Park, but what are the hard decisions that we're going to have to face? We right now, for two years, have breached Lake Earl in a way where it does not heal anymore. We have to stop doing stupid things like that.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized, please?
Please.
You know, I'm sorry to say, that is Eileen Cooper. I didn't hear you identify yourself. And I appreciate Eileen Cooper coming back up here because I'd like to respond to what took place after the meeting.
Let's not do that, and that's...
Well, you asked me, you asked if I could be recognized, and now you...
Let's not engage, Eileen.
Okay. So I'd like the opportunity to say that Ms. Cooper has been thoroughly educated on the process, and there has been an interruption in information, exigent information to all board members on the subject of water and below the table and the allegations which Ms. Cooper is making reference to. So I think we need to take a good, hard, cold look at that and look to have all, each of our five members of this board fully appraised on what goes on inside our Natural Resources Committee, which is the next step for Ms. Cooper, and how we can satiate the public to make sure that they're being heard.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Joan Miles, Delnart County.
Good morning, Joan.
I admire Ms. Cooper can talk without notes, but I'm going to have to read this. I'm passing out a flyer about a compassion course online. I'm taking this around town. The course began June 20 and continues for one year. Registration was extended to June 27, and already more than 6,000 participants have registered around the, globally. The tragedy, let me get my book. The Tragedy of American Compassion by Marvin Olansky was published in 1992. The author wrote, "We have enough right now, $190 billion, to cure poverty. We don't do it because much of that $190 billion is not for, quote, 'persons of limited income,' but for the poverty industry, bureaucrats, caseworkers, service providers, planners, evaluators, et cetera. We've always had poverty, but why was the underclass so much smaller? The answer is that human needs were answered by other human beings, not by bureaucracies. We didn't ignore the interaction between the way one helps and the effects of that help on the human spirit and the human behavior." I saw a sign on a coffee shop on TV the other day, which read, "No, we don't have Internet." And in large capital letters, it read, "Talk to each other." We don't talk anymore, but on a much more serious level, disturbed young people are talking with their guns. College campuses are shutting down free speech. Demonstrators are shouting one-sided protests. Instead of conversation, young people bury themselves in video games and such. The horrendous drug culture has obliterated our communities. The influx of illegal immigrants is a huge challenge, and we let the media do our talking for us. On the local level, instead of a fair and balanced dispute, we circulate recall petitions. I'm hoping that this free compassion course online will generate honest conversation among people globally away from the biased media. To register, go to compassioncourse.org. Charles Krauthammer, I'm almost done, famous author, scientist, TV commentator, Pulitzer Prize winner, et cetera, who died recently, wrote, "The problem is what big government is doing to civil society. The essence of free society is the independence and strength of the institutions that lie between the government and the individual, the church, the school, the family, the community. All of the evidence shows that well-intentioned programs are destroying or weakening these institutions. Please register at compassioncourse.org."
Thank you. If you want to give those notes to Kylie, she can distribute them to us. Thanks. Any other public comment today? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and, come on up. Don't be shy. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Plaz Fowler.
Good morning.
Good morning, board members. I'm here, I know Bob Berkowitz is the district that I'm talking about. I would like a sign removed at the end of Second Street. It's called Dead Park by the Thai House. They've practically destroyed it. A lot of people don't know who Hobbs and Wall is, but there is a museum sign down at the end of that road. They tore one outside off of where the railroads go. There's three signs left, and they did a lot of tagging on it. I'd like to see it removed. It's a museum piece, maybe put somewhere else. I talked to Roger once about it when they tagged it to see if the city would take the information off of it, but it wasn't his district. I imagine that it's fishing game. I really haven't looked it up on the map. My family used to own it, Papasus, but I think in the best interest, it would be good if it was removed because it is a historical artifact. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Any other public comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Let's go ahead and take up the, let's see, nope, sorry. It is 10:20, and we have a 10:15 timed item, so let's go ahead and move on to the Cannabis Working Group update. I believe Eric Gunther is here today with us. He's going to be making that presentation. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, members of the board. How are you all doing today? My name is Eric Gunther Gasky, also a member of the Cannabis Working Group. I've been asked today to give a brief update as to our last meeting and kind of where we're at. So I'll start. We met on June 13, and we did get a new member to our group, Kate Fisher, who's representing the Yurok Tribe in Klamath. Briefly, the Yurok Tribe has expressed that they are a zero-tolerance tribe and that they are requesting that the Klamath area be a no-go space. They don't currently have even a grocery store there, so their concern is, you know, obviously, they prefer to have a grocery store first before they do anything else. On top of the zero-tolerance that the tribe has currently in place, they requested that our advisory group discuss that. We did, and I think we came up to a general consensus that we would respect the tribe's requests at that point. So I don't know if any of that stuff is currently, you know, in direction to Joel at this point, but that is something that we discussed at the last meeting, and we seem to have a consensus amongst the group that that would be quite okay.
Eric, if you don't mind us having some exchange with you here at this time...
Absolutely, please.
What was Joel's response to that as far as legal ramifications for the board's...
I don't think Joel had a response in terms of any legal ramifications of that. I think it's pretty much up to you guys as a board, once the recommendations are put in front of you, to decide if that was something you would prefer or not.
So he didn't opine that we could or couldn't do it?
He did not. Yeah, he did not opine that. And I believe that we can, from what I understood, Joel to mention is that we could put, you know, restrictions on that space and that area. How that would happen, I don't know. That would probably be a general question to ask Joel.
Sure.
But we did, you know, under consensus, agree to, you know, to kind of word that within our recommendations. After that, we started to discuss some of the manufacturing and processing things. Some of the stuff we discussed about the manufacturing and processing were hours of operation. We basically discussed amongst the group how we could try to limit the sizing, the influx of manufacturing. What we did discuss is that, and some of the things we've seen in some other states and some of the localities within California is that manufacturing and processing, particularly the manufacturing aspect of the cannabis industry, is one of the leading causes of, say, real estate increase in prices, bubbling kind of stuff. It's where a lot of the, a lot of money spent in the manufacturing industry aspect of it, there's a lot of equipment that people buy, so there tends to be a lot more money in it. The one thing about the manufacturing and processing aspect of it is that it's fairly innocuous. It's usually behind closed doors. It's not open to the public. So that is something that we kind of jostled back and forth within the group, how we can try to limit the sizing, limit the scale of that. We don't have a large influx of manufacturers from out of the area come in leasing properties that kind of conflict with what we've tried to do as a group and a community, which is try to create a smaller craft industry for our local people. So some of the things we tossed around were, you know, was there a way to restrict hours of operation for them? Because some of these manufacturing companies, they can actually operate 24 hours a day. There are machines, there are people, people run the machines. So I do know that there are manufacturing businesses within the state that they pretty much operate those machines 24 hours a day. So we discussed some of those. I think Joel had some hesitation as to how we can limit hours of operation for a business, but he didn't seem to think that that wasn't possible or impossible. We discussed possibly putting a square foot cap on the actual size of what the manufacturing could do, you know, say, for happenstance, if there was a 20,000-square-foot warehouse, you know, a large-scale manufacturer from out of the area would come, lease a 20,000-square-foot. Is there a way to cap the size of that? Again, Joel had some opinions as to that. He's going to kind of work through some of his legal stuff and see if there was, you know, things we could do with limiting square footage. The bigger thing that we talked about with manufacturing is the zoning, how and where we can potentially have manufacturing and potentially processing. It was brought up by Joel as maybe doing a zoning overlay, a map, which would basically be taking some of the C4, the C2 and C3 commercials, potentially rezoning them to accept manufacturing. According to Heidi and Joel, that seemed to be something that could be a workable solution so that we don't have, in a C1 district, we wouldn't have a manufacturing because it's not explicitly implicitly stated that we can actually do manufacturing in C1. I think Joel's, and I could be wrong, I'm trying to regurgitate as much of the information as I can and be on point as I possibly can. It seemed to be that that would be something that Joel and Heidi could work together with planning to come up with just a district overlay, a zoning overlay map that we could have. The one thing we did discuss within the group is the conflicting potential uses of our retail spaces, which are normally, which are going to be, you know, potentially in the C4 and C2 commercial zones, how that would conflict with manufacturing. You know, the manufacturers could come in, take up all the spaces that the retailers would have, and we would be left with, you know, very limited options for retail outlets. But we're going to continue to discuss that more at the next meeting, and hopefully Joel will have some more information back to us on how that would play out with the overlay map. He's actually, I think, going to provide a generalized overlay mapping for us so we can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. Within that, we also considered, within the retail and manufacturing, there were some, there was some expressed concern at the previous meeting prior to June 13 in regards to some of the rural areas that we have, say, Gasky, Smith River area, Klamath, back in that point of conversation, that we may, there may be a hard enforcement space in our county, given the fact that we have rural spaces. There is a concern amongst the community, rightfully so, and I think some of the law enforcement in the area, that, you know, if we had a retail outlet in a rural area, the response time could be upwards of 15 minutes to a half an hour. So there's been some expressed concern about potentially having retail outlets in our outlying areas of the county, given the fact that, you know, we have a vast area to enforce. And so we did discuss that within the group, and I think one of our considerations is to try to keep a majority of our retail spaces because currently with no, with the banking restrictions involved in cannabis right now, a lot of these businesses at the retail space are cash-only. I mean, there are a lot of other businesses that deal with a large amount of cash here too. But we discussed amongst the group that that would be something we should consider at the very beginning, you know, starting slow, maybe keeping it within our general space on the outskirts of the Crescent City limits, to keep it closer to law enforcement and the potential for, you know, any unlawful act that may happen. It gives the law enforcement and the community an opportunity to get there quick enough. So I think amongst our group, we came to a consensus that would be something we would consider to give you as a recommendation. And we'll have more information on that as we move forward a little bit more, and Joel gets back to us with some of those aspects and how that would work. Within the manufacturing, we started to discuss the non-volatile. There is two types of manufacturing. I'm pretty sure you're quite aware, but I'll just go over. There's a volatile manufacturing, and then there's a non-volatile manufacturing. Volatile manufacturing includes volatile gases. There's a lot of spaces in California that are not allowing volatile solid extraction processes. That is something we're not going to allow as a recommendation to you. We're going to recommend non-volatile extractions to include CO2, which is, by the state of California, considered a non-volatile gas. Ethanol extraction, which is used within the food-grade manufacturing process. Joel mentioned that any of those manufacturing permits would go through the CUP process, the conditional use permit, which would then give the potential for the planning commission and the public to be involved in some of those choices. You know, if there were a permit requested for, say, an ethanol extraction facility somewhere in the C4, C2 area, that conditional use permit would be the mechanism that the county would be able to use to control size and to get the public input that we're not necessarily getting in the meeting space. So Joel seemed to think that that would be a very good mechanism to use, and he's going to get back to us on some of the finer details of that. Let's see. Outside of that, we just had a lot of general discussions. I don't think we came up with any specific recommendations to Joel, other than to come back to this next meeting tomorrow with some of the things we discussed and try to fine-tune some of those things. I congratulate you guys on passing the personal cultivation ordinance. I think that was probably the most pertinent thing that had to do with every individual of the county. We are going to, at our next meeting tomorrow, we're going to start the conversation about cultivation. Some of the things we're going to be talking about with cultivation are setbacks, size and scale of the gardens that we may recommend, and outdoor and indoor. And those will be things we'll take up tomorrow, and hopefully we can have some good discussions and have some positive movement forward there. I think that's about it.
Great. Any questions for Eric at this time?
Thank you.
Great. Eric, we're going to go ahead and open up for public comment on this.
Great, thank you guys very much.
Okay, any public comment on the working group presentation? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any further comments from the board at this time? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and move to the consent agenda. Eric, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. Good luck tomorrow on the start of the commercial cultivation discussion. Let's go ahead and take up consent agenda items 1 through 12 at this time.
Motion to approve.
We do have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number seven and item number 10. I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and take up general government items. Item number 15, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support to Caltrans, Division of Rail and Mass Transit regarding the Redwood Coast Transit Authority intercity bus proposal as requested by Supervisor Cowan. Supervisor?
Pretty much what you just said. This is a yearly thing for the Redwood Coast Transit Board. They apply for this grant regularly, and so they are asking for a letter of support. The grant has already been sent, is my understanding, last week, but this will be sent, this letter as a follow-up.
Okay, any comments from the board at this time concerning the proposal?
Yes.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I also wanted to let the folks know that this is a declining amount of money that's coming from Caltrans. It's $53.11 money. The amount in question is $175,000. And the proceeds of this money will go to bolster up operating expenses for Route 20, which is the route that takes you down to Arcata and connects with the Greyhound service. So the application has been approved, as was mentioned, and we're looking forward to seeing the, the letter of support is a new thing for our board to involve itself in because this has been quite a political matter with Caltrans, and it's declining amount of money as to these transportation agencies, so I very much support that.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion from the board at this time?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Item number 16, which is review and approve the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 Border Coast Regional Airport Authority budget as requested by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority interim airport director. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan Doherty, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. So I'm here for the annual presentation of our budget to you. This budget has been presented to and approved by the Border Coast Board earlier this month. So for the first time in the eight years I've been here presenting to you a balanced budget, that is basically only possible because of the reduction in payroll for this year with us needing to have a new airport manager that we've yet to hire and the need or the ability to not pay into our other post-employment benefit for the next few years. Other than that, it remains very tight and very slim, but is necessary because of some of the things that have happened at the airport, in particular, of course, the Penn Air bankruptcy that hit us at the end of last year and then into this year, and then being without an airline for four months, which costs us in rents and passenger facility charges and a number of other ways. Makes it for a very difficult, but we hope manageable, year. So those are the main changes there. You'll also see in here that there is a new line item that is for the payments to our current air carrier that is now run through alternative essential air service. So instead of the way it used to be where the federal government would pay the airline, we pay the airline and the federal government pays us. So you'll see a corresponding new line in the income account with exactly the same amount, just runs in and out, and it does it within a matter of a couple of days. So work's really slick so far. As far as anything else, I don't think there's any surprises in here. There are continued grant costs and income from the federal government on those costs, and we're able to have all of those offset, allowing for a balanced budget. The only other thing, I think, is obviously, like, the PFCs are lower this year, and that's because we have just the one flight a day. There's a limit to how many passenger facility charges you can get with just one flight. The flights are going well. We hope to be able to expand that, but it's probably going to be six months in before we discuss that further. And then on our special aviation budget, we have no particular special projects planned, just continued maintenance at those airports. We anticipate that will be covered by the funds that we receive from the state of California for those two airports, which is $10,000 a year. And that's the only plan for those airports this year. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions from the board at this time? Please.
Yes, Susan, thanks for making that report. We've had a discussion about the budget, which I think is a lean and mean one. The county finds itself in an unusual situation of lending itself its own money, in the Melorella money, which is, I think, to build the terminal. And I was on the negative side of the vote on that. I would like to see or hear your point of view on the discussion to see what exactly and what is the future for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority to actually help even a token payment of that $96,000 a year for the next 40 years, in $2018, $2017, in paying the county back. Would you address that, please?
Certainly. Okay, first off, maybe just a little bit of history, because I think that there's some confusion still to date amongst some of the public, and I'm going to take this opportunity, about the terminal. Yes, the county has loaned us 2.8... Yes, the county has loaned us $2.8 million, for which we are so grateful. In order for us to be able to use the $11.3 million that the federal government had available for us for that terminal, we were given a one-time, one chance only to build this terminal. And without this county having made the decision, we couldn't have done that and couldn't have made use of those funds. So you had asked previously in our previous conversation, Supervisor, for goodwill, a goodwill payment. And for me, I don't think there's any better currency in goodwill than complete honesty. And complete honesty is certainly what I have presented and represented from the first time of talking to county staff, to Jay, to Clint, to going to the finance committee, to presenting to this board. And that was certainly my opinion that we had no funds. We run on a very tight budget. The county gives us $271,000 a year for our budget. That was the same amount that it cost the county in 2007 to run the airport. Here we are 11 years later. I think we all know what inflation has done. We scramble every year to do the minimum projects that have to be done at the airport to keep the airport running. We should be spending far more on our runways. And so do we have money at this point that we could give in good faith, even a small payment? In my opinion, and I'm not the board, it's not my decision, but my opinion is absolutely not. We do not. At the time that the agreement was made and in all the conversations, we had talked about the potential for the state of California to change the way it allocates funds on aviation fuel. The FAA was pressuring the state to do so, and they are still pressuring the state to do so. I had a recent conversation with the regional director of the Western Pacific Region of the Federal Aviation Administration, and he told me that while they continue to battle, he doesn't think that they're going to get anywhere with the current administration and are already beginning to try to work with the two top candidates for the next governor. They have also considered seriously putting on further federal pressure, putting further pressure into play to push California to start allocating those federal fuel taxes to airports rather than into the general fund. I would anticipate that anything that is done would be done within, it would probably take, I don't think it's going to happen this year. It would probably take another year. Mr. McClary, however, did say that he hoped in September at the airports conference that he might be able to have an update for us. So always knowing that there was a potential and that they were pushing for those funds, when this agreement was put into place, it was written into the contract with Delano County, that should the state begin the correct allocation of those fuel taxes, that the first amount out of that money would come towards making a payment to Delano County. And every year we get those funds, the first money to come out of it would be to Delano County. There is nothing that we would like better than to be able to pay the county back. So excuse my long answer, but, okay? Anybody?
Thank you, Susan. Are there any comments from the board? Questions? Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and open up for public comment. Public comment on this time? Okay. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Thank you again, Susan. Continue the good work out there. Hopefully you'll refine the replacement soon and get back to retirement. All right. Let's go ahead and take up item number 17, which is approve and adopt budget transfer 0604 in the amount of $26,698 within the Office of Emergency Services Management Performance Grant as requested by the county administrative officer.
I approve 16.
Oh, shoot.
I make a motion to approve the proposed...
We're going to just bypass that, Susan.
18-19 Border Coast Regional Airport Authority budget as requested.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Back to item number 17.
Jay?
You had a question?
No. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve for budget transfer 06-04, item number 17 on the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Public comment on item number 17? Okay. Let's bring it back to the board. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Move on. Consideration miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delano, authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state and general government. Item number 18, which is discuss and take action as necessary to consider and approve the 2018-19 fiscal year recommendation requested budgets as presented by departments. And number two on that, which is approve the position list request for wireless device stipends as provided in the adopted wireless device policy. Item number three, direct the budget team to continue to research and analyze all available cost-saving options for direct departments to, that no fixed asset purchases shall be allowed prior to the adoption of the fiscal final budget without board or supervisor approval. Item number five, direct departments, that no budget transfers will be allowed, that transfer funds from salaries and benefits to any other expense line unless determined to be an emergency by the county administrative officer and auditor controller. And item number six, accept the recommended children's budget as presented and direct staff as necessary as requested by the county administrative officer. Jay?
So this is the next step, and the first step in regards to presenting the balanced budget to the board of supervisors. The recommended budget before you reflects the requests of all of the departments minus about $550,000 worth of funds that we discussed with the department and have cut to this point. We had sent out a memo earlier in the year, which was to maintain the fiscal year 17-18 expenditures, along with the revenue, as much as they can control. Obviously, the cost of doing business goes up annually, and so what you see before you today is an unbalanced budget, and we will be waiting for the auditor controller after the end of the fiscal year to close the books and give us an understanding of what our fund balance is that we will have to work with. At this point, we are seeing some revenue increases in our property and sales tax, but they are slight increases. And they, at this point, are not keeping up with all of our expenditure requests that the departments have turned in. There are some proposals that are on the table that are not reflected in the recommended at this time because it's not prudent to bring those forward. Those have significant impacts on the general fund or could have. Most of those are related to position requests and reorganizations of a couple of different departments. Once we know more of what we're working with for the final push, we will then try to prioritize those. We'll bring those to the board, and I hope the first or second meeting of August that the board can consider and then reprioritize. And then we will come forward in September for the first public hearing. I believe it would be on the 11th, 14 days for the public hearing, and closing on the 25th with a balanced budget. What's before you today is an interim spending plan for the next couple of months until we can get the board to a point where they can adopt a balanced budget. As I mentioned, you know, we're dealing with requests from departments. There are needs. We've obviously put our fleet of vehicles on the back burner for a number of years, and we are having to look at the fleet overall so that we can get those tools to employees. Obviously, the sheriff's department is a primary on that, and we're looking at alternatives for being able to get them vehicles and roll over their fleet, which is a requirement. And then we have a number of departments that have needs just for day-to-day vehicles, so we're going to be setting up a plan for that. As we go forward with the departments, we will go through what we call round two, which is once we know where we're at with the fund balance, we will start making any adjustments from there to the ultimate recommended that will come before the board of supervisors. Once the board sets their priorities, we will work on the final adopted budget at that point. And if the board has any questions on the process or where we're at right now, certainly take those.
Questions for Jay at this time? Supervisor?
Jay, do we need six different actions, motions, or is this one very long motion on 18? Six, five, I'm sorry. Six, yes.
I think you can condense that down to making a motion for recommendations one through six.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions for Jay at this time? Then let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board then. Do we have a motion or recommendation at this time for the recommended budget?
I make a motion to approve items one through six and item 18.
Second. Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on with item number 19, which is approve and authorize the Delano County capital improvement and maintenance plan for 2018 through 2023 as requested by the building, maintenance, and parks superintendent. Good day, Alan. Didn't know if you wanted to say anything today, but you're certainly welcome to.
I want to say good morning.
Say good morning.
What you have in front of you is basically our plan for the next five years. We have ranked some of the items. Obviously, health and life safety is always going to be first. For those of you who have looked at it, the grease trap at juvenile hall is a priority, and we have made some movement on that, which I believe is going to be a really good thing for the county since we had a contractor go in and say that it can be repaired versus completely replaced. Hopefully, that'll be starting here early next year, and do you guys have any other questions?
I do. Please.
First of all, Alan, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate your efforts. You're very cooperative and immediately respond to any question I have, and you take care of it, and that's very pleasing to me, and I thank you for that. So what's on the priority list? I know mold is being discussed. I know that's important. Give us, give the public an opportunity to say, what is it you do, and what do you put into the top of the list so the public knows what you're doing?
Well, once again, health and life safety is the number one thing. And in this case, what we have right now is we have an issue with juvenile hall with the grease trap. We have an issue with mold over at the veteran service, our veteran memorial building. We have a septic issue out at Florence Keller, and we've been kind of maintaining those for quite a while. Recently, both myself and Chris Edwards went down, and we became mold and silica certified. So we do have the ability to go in and remediate the issues at the memorial hall, which we're going to plan for hopefully fall, maybe at the very end of December, but plan on going in there, removing all of the mold. We did look at the inspection report. It is, it's not bad mold. I'd say it's all stuff that we can deal with, and we're going to go in there, we're going to remove it, we're going to clean it, and we're going to encapsulate it, and we should be good.
Good. I'm glad you distinguished between good mold and bad mold. There is no good mold.
No, no, obviously not. But the starchy botress is what everybody's concerned about. But I'd say what we have there is, could be allergens and stuff like that, but it's not something that we have to take any real serious concerns with.
So your recent certification, you and Chris Edwards' recent certification allows us to save some money.
Absolutely.
So you don't have to outsource this and find someone to mitigate the mold issue in Eureka, Reading, or wherever you have to go to find it. So you're able to take care of these mold issues locally now?
Yes.
That's good news. Thanks.
Thank you.
What do you have for a timeline on that mold removal for the vets hall?
I'm hoping to have it done by October, but depending upon other projects, if I really plan on having that done before 2019.
Supervisor?
Borrow Campground. I see you got it listed as Borrow Campground.
I would, ultimately, I would love to turn Borrow into a campground, some sort of a summer camp facility. I do know that the local high school football team has done some inquiry about possibly using it as a place to go up and do some team-building exercise. The $100,000 in there is, was for to build camps. We look at it about $1,000 per campsite, but that's kind of a pie-in-the-sky dream, especially since I'm really concerned about that place. If we were to open it up to a campground, sort of situation is the egress, and bringing a lot of cars in and out of there would be real dangerous right now. So, I mean, it's kind, it's great. I'd love to do it, but it's one of those things that's way down the road type deal.
So this $100,000 or $20,000 a year, I guess, is that what you're figuring?
Well, what the $100,000 was for is to put it, to actually create and put in 50 campsites as well as retrofit another building to have showers facility for us.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor?
So going back, I mean, when we all started this process and we were even just in the discussions of closing it down, the school district had come to us with ideas, and then that kind of dissipated. And when I checked with them, they said, well, we're waiting on the county. So I think communications need to be started back up with the school district. They had ideas, they had things they wanted to do with it. I know I was comfortable making the vote, I did, knowing that something else was going into it, and it certainly wasn't a campground. I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, but I was told we were going in a different direction. So I personally talked to the superintendent last month, maybe, and was told that he's just waiting on the county. So maybe we can start those conversations again, or maybe they are going on, Jay?
Perhaps I can help with the potential rumor control that's going to come from this. So there ultimately is going to be some alternatives that go before the future facilities committee, and one of those would be the school district's letter of intent or letter of interest, which is not very detailed. But we had to look at other alternatives, and I think what Alan is telling you today is we're looking at different types of alternatives that might be uses up there for that committee to then give direction back as to whether or not they want to focus on any one in particular or a couple of those. One of the, one of the things that we're looking at is what does a recreational use look like? Would it be compatible to the neighborhood or the area? Is it something that, you know, this board would even want to consider? But we have to do our due diligence. So this is a little bit ahead of the game, and that's why it's the last priority. But we are also going to have a company take a look at it and see if it's even something feasible so that we can give all the information to future facilities who can then give us direction and bring it back to the board. So this is all really preliminary. I have been in touch with the superintendent, and yes, he is waiting on us. We're waiting on this last little bit here, and then we'll bring it forward to future facilities.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Alan, please expand on the medium priority pieces, specifically increases in revenues and what the sources of revenues are. Going to assume you're talking about our campgrounds that currently exist, but is there other sources that I'm missing?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch a part of that.
Increases in revenues.
As it relates to the parks department or the building maintenance?
You just say medium priority, increases in revenues. Were you, were you hoping to expand?
Well, we are, we are looking to increase the revenues in our parks department. I'd say that, that we're looking at doing, because we are currently over our current revenues. We also have planned on, we've increased the, we're looking to increase the camping fee by $5 from $15 to $20, which is going to bring up the revenues, hopefully, by about 25% is what my plan is. We're also working with some of our non-general fund departments, increasing some services that we're doing in there.
Okay. Is there any other revenue sources that looking at or considering, or is it just parks?
Well, no, we're also looking at our wonderful folks at the Health and Human Services, and we've been providing them more services.
Okay. But that's coming out of county government, so is there any economic development-type source of, like camping?
No, we haven't, we haven't explored any of that.
Okay. And then also expenses associated with cleaning up, essentially, and removing the hosts that we've had in many of these parks. How did that hit or impact your budget this last year?
The Clifford camp, it was pretty quick and painless. They left, we went in, we had the site cleaned up in about an hour, and we now have a full-time person in there. We had to wait until June 5th to get the folks out of Ruby Van Deeter Park. I was able to have with my workforce... The Clifford Camp, it was pretty quick and painless. They left, we went in, we had the site cleaned up in about an hour, and we now have a full-time person in there. We had to wait until June fifth to get the folks out of Ruby Van De, Van Deavider Park. I was able to have with my workforce center crew that site basically cleaned up within three hours, so, I mean, it was a minimal impact, especially since the workforce center folks don't cost us anything, so, and we have new, new hosts in all of those sites.
Excellent. I was noticing, as I've been driving by every day, your revenue should be quite substantial here for the last month.
We, we've had to make some special trips out because the Iron Rangers have been getting full.
Yep, I imagine they have been. Looks like the overflow this year is going to be substantial.
That's what we're shooting for.
Excellent. All right, Alan, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on that presentation. Anybody interested? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. There's no action to be taken on that report at this time, or is there? No, actually, there is. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve and authorize Delmar County Capital Improvement and Maintenance Plan two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-three.
All right, we do have a motion on the table, and we have a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, all right. Item number twenty, discuss and direct staff to draft a letter in support of Senate Bill nine thirty, which is the financial institutions cannabis bill to gain the ability to utilize banks for cannabis transaction as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz. Supervisor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legal growers of marijuana and people who are basically involved in every aspect of cannabis are under serious constraints financially because their business has to be done all in cash, and that creates a real problem when you're trying to pay your taxes, or buy product, or sell product, because you're dealing with cash, and cash causes problems. Because you don't have any banks or credit unions, consequently, you're open to robbery and burglary and all kinds of things, and people know that you are there with tremendous amounts of cash. SB nine thirty basically limits this exposure by creating a cannabis limited charter bank and credit union that would allow all people involved in the cannabis business to be able to have credit cards, be able to pay by check, be able to run a business like they should be running a business. And so I'm asking here that we have a letter of support sent to Assemblyman Wood, because that's where the bill is right now, and also to Governor Brown supporting this measure.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any comments at this time from the board? Supervisor?
I continue to have some issues with reconciling SB nine thirty, which will, has been passed by the Senate and move on to the Assembly. There's an issue here which exacerbates further split between California law and federal law over the issue of cannabis. As long as cannabis remains a Schedule I controlled substance, federal banks are not allowed to and will never take cannabis cash, no matter what the legislature makes permissible, permissible under state law. Further consideration are the Federal Anti-Money Laundering Act and Anti-Terrorism Acts, laws. That would include the Bank Secrecy Act and the U.S. Patriot Act, and I infer from that that federal laws make it illegal for financial institutions to handle funds stemming from criminal activity, since this would include violations of federal drug laws. Meanwhile, there is a, an acronym called RICO. Many of you have heard that before, that's the Racketeering Influenced and Corrupt Organization Acts, provides that all property bought with proceeds from illegal activity is subject to forfeiture regardless of state law. Therefore, and again, this is my inference, RICO restricts cannabis lending because if the federal government seizes cannabis business property, then the lender would lose collateral protecting against their losses. It's a potentially huge liability for the state in terms of how we move forward with federal law or the lack of action and seizing cannabis at property, which the federal government has every right to do under current law. When you combine all these risks with the fact that the state still hasn't been able to finalize the details on tag and trace protocols to ensure that there is sure distinction between legally grown cannabis and illegally grown cannabis, then this only further exacerbates the risk to the state, increases the risk to the state, excuse me, and particularly here in Delmar County, it's a bit of a problem because we have quite a few illegal grows going on in the backwoods of our county, and this will make matters even worse. SB nine thirty seeks to foster further financial incentives for California's cannabis investment, but it lacks the guarantees that revenue will go back to the communities desperately affected. Additionally, the bill would create a stable-run incentive to foster and boost the cannabis industry regardless of impacts because the state would now have a vested financial stake in marijuana operations. And finally, as I understand, our RCRC organization has and is in support of this Bill nine, SB nine thirty. It goes against my personal moral conviction, as well as being shaky public policy for the state of California. The bill walks us down a very dangerous path, and until the federal government legalizes or otherwise alters cannabis laws, it's my feeling that California state government not dig itself into a deeper hole than they've already dug themselves into. I will vote no on SB nine thirty letter of support.
Great, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Great meeting today, thank you, everybody. Thank you Supervisor Berkowitz for bringing this to the board to discuss. I think this is a good bill. It's, it's supported by the Board of Equalization, and I believe Fiona Ma was one of the, one of the people who spearheaded this effort. Supported by the California Growers Association, and any locality or municipality that's considering engaging in any level of commercial cannabis business, I think is in their interest to support this bill. There's federal bills right now with large bipartisan support in Congress to address the issues that you spoke about, Supervisor Gitlin. States lead the way generally, starts local, moves to the state level, and then those groups and bodies apply pressure at the federal level. Generally not the other way around. We don't see a lot of progress or change for the better coming from the top down. So I think that, an argument that says that because there's a federal conflict, and for that reason that individuals local in states shouldn't stand up for what they believe is right, I think denies an understanding of the constitutional process that we live with in America. So thank you again for bringing this up, and I support the letter of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. For the record, that was Jesse Davis. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Thank you, Eric Enther Gasky. Thank you Supervisor Berkowitz for drafting this letter. I think it's very pertinent, as Jesse stated, for any local jurisdiction in the state of California to get behind the support of this. It has the full support of the state legislature, has full support of all the Board of Equalization, and it's the right thing to do. Like Jesse had stated, change happens locally. It moves to the state level, goes to the federal level. If we didn't have that type of system, we would still be stuck without voter rights. We would still be stuck in a time and place where people did not have the power to say what they felt. And this is a good thing. This means that, at least at the state level, Colorado's working for the same thing, Washington is working towards the same thing, Oregon is trying to work towards the same thing. This is where change starts, and this is where change happens. To deny that is to deny the due process that we have all been inherently gifted from our forefathers, our grandparents, our grandmothers, everybody before us fought for change locally. And if we deny that, we've given up. And I appreciate Supervisor Gitlin's opinion, and he has a right, just like everybody else has a right, to express themselves. But sometimes, you've just got to go with what's right. And I appreciate you guys' time. I hope you do find it amongst yourselves to, to support this letter. I don't think it's going to be the end-all for the state. It may actually be the end-all for the federal government's prohibition on something that has not, not been right for the people. Thank you guys very much. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi, Robert Derigo, excuse me, District One. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Berkowitz, for, for bringing this to the board. You know, I think you, you listened to what people were saying over the last year, and that's something we brought up, was to seek support for other initiatives to kind of help this reform move along, and, and to Mr. Gitlin, I, you know, our federal understanding of this is unraveling, you know, it was the Commerce Clause that allowed the Controlled Substance Act to, to trump over, over the state's rights, the Tenth Amendment in our Constitution. So, and now we're, we're starting to see there's a sports gambling Supreme Court decision at the federal level that is starting, I think you would understand, unravel the Commerce Clause's control. You know, basically, we have a federal law that prohibits gambling in any state but Nevada, I believe, and, and so this is going to have an impact on our understanding of, of the Tenth Amendment, you know, and, and I believe it's going to, it's going to strip a lot of, of the Controlled Substance Act away. That's okay, because each state has laws prohibiting, you know, these dangerous narcotics and that sort of thing, and, you know, states' rights. But I really appreciate Mr. Berkowitz, you know, bringing this, the letter to the board, and I would really appreciate the board sending the letter off. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion on the table?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to direct staff to draft a letter in support of SB nine thirty.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table.
A second.
And a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, we're going to go ahead and move along with item twenty-one, which is receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Delmar, programs, projects, progress of two-by-two committees, goal committees, and other board and staff travel reports.
Chairman, could we step back to the legislative? We have a gentleman in the audience that might want to talk a little bit about some of our legislative.
He's a pretty gentle guy, isn't he?
So I'd like to reintroduce Mr. Burns, just for a short report before he meets with everybody.
Yeah, that'd be great. Mr. Burns could come up, bring his ball of yarn, we'll be in good shape. Good morning, Mr. Burns, how are you? You're a long way from home.
I am, thanks for having me. Greg Burns, apologies for laughing. There's an ongoing joke that some of you may be aware of about a nickname that I picked up during some of the supervisor's trip to Washington last year. I won't get into what it is, but it's kind of funny, we can all talk about it later. Anyway, Greg Burns with Thorn Run Partners. When I was here last year, I was with my old firm, and I have since transitioned to a new firm, which is why I appreciate you all approving a new contract with my new firm today. Just real briefly, so I can give you the two-minute spiel on the new company, I'm, first of all, I've already said I'm very excited to be at the new firm. It's a, really what I consider to be a next-generation firm. Many of the, the older ones had started back in the eighties or early nineties, maybe, and even before, like my old firm. My new firm has started in two thousand ten, so it's much younger, much more dynamic, much more, in my opinion, vibrant, and I think it's just a better place for me and for the folks that I work with. So I'm really excited about that. I have an opportunity to work with a whole new host of colleagues. I'm also really appreciative of the fact that my associate that works with you all, Mary Scott Hardwick, decided to join with me at the new firm, and then we also teamed up with another gentleman to transition his business over to Thorn Run at the same time. So we've really created a new little nexus of folks all working on similar issues, and I'm, I'm really excited to have done it and made that transition. Last thing about Thorn Run Partners, you know, where our firm is growing, it's nice to be with a place that you feel an energy at, and where you're contributing to the growth of something. That wasn't really true at, at the old firms that I was at anymore, so that's why I really decided to move on. But during your next trips to Washington, I'll look forward to introducing you all more formally to the firm and having you all meet some of my colleagues. I do want to talk about a number of issues, if I may, just briefly, about some of the things, not only that I've heard today, that discussed during this meeting, but also, you know, some of the things that we've worked on over the past year successfully for you all. Number one, on my mind, being secure rural schools, obviously being a big victory for this community and for the region as a whole. When I was here last year, I said that secure rural schools, I thought, would be dealt with in the annual wrap-up of funding bills, once Congress finally got around to doing that, and it turned out that's exactly how they did address the issue. They did a, kind of a complicated deal at, earlier this year, to, to come up with more revenue to spend, basically a budget cap deal, and in doing so, they freed up a lot of additional money for secure rural schools and a number of other priorities. So we're really pleased that it got approved. I think you have strong support for it, continue to have strong support for SRS and that program moving forward. I know from your perspective, you, you probably also see the declining payments and think that, well, how strong can that really be, which I think is a fair question, but it's better to have something than nothing, so I do still consider that a win in today's world. And then just with respect to sort of looking ahead to the future, I think, before we get too far down the line of trying to figure out how to get the next reauthorization of secure rural schools done, we have to take a moment to let your delegation and others, frankly, breathe and work on some other issues, and also thank them for the work that they've done to get us to this point. So I would recommend that we hold a bit on jumping into sort of the next iteration of the SRS program, and instead take some time to thank and appreciate the work that they've done for us. I also want to mention essential air service. It does continue to exist in a number of ways. It's reauthorized in the FAA Authorization Bill. It's still being funded through the appropriations process, but I do want to note that it will always remain under attack from some people within the Congress. It's never going to be an overly popular program. It's always going to have its detractors. In fact, Congressman McClintock, once again, offered an amendment to do away with the program during a recent debate on the floor, and while that debate did not succeed, it's just, it continues to be frustrating that, that it's a, a program that he likes to target for elimination. But again, I still see that program continuing, which obviously is critical to the community, as we've discussed many times before. An issue that your new interim airport director brought up, Susan, the aviation fuel taxes, I'm actually surprised to hear that that's still an issue. I, I knew about it a couple of years ago, we've talked about it before. We've seen the Federal Register notices where the FAA has directed all states to ensure that they're spending the money on aviation, or on actual aviation purposes, and it's mind-boggling to know and hear that in the state of California, the governor and the state are essentially ignoring that directive. So obviously, she's had some conversations with the folks at the FAA, talked with them about it. I'm going to go back and speak with members of your delegation, particularly your two senators, to see what steps they've taken and engagements they've made on this issue, and see if we can't get them to weigh in potentially with the state and encourage them to do what's right and do what's, not only what's right, but what's law, essentially. Another issue that you just finished talking about, but also came up in your earlier presentation related to the cannabis working group, is obviously the banking issues. Those are clearly an impediment to the development of this legal industry. I'm not really sure what term to use, but I, I actually do think that the banking issues are something where Congress could recognize that while they don't necessarily want to legalize marijuana across the board, that they could seemingly remove some of the restrictions against federally chartered banks and others, you know, sort of accepting those payments and being involved in those businesses. So I think that- think that that actually is an area where we could see some compromise over the next few years. I don't know that it's going to happen in the short term, but I do think it could happen in the next few years. I think, speaking to the points that were raised by some members of the public on this issue, I think that the tide is obviously continuing to turn and probably will continue to do so. And I could see Congress, you know, addressing the banking issues without actually addressing the legality of the drug. I want to also note that the harbor dredging project, Crescent City Harbor, received some federal funding, nearly $500,000, just recently, from the Corps of Engineers to begin to do some planning for the next dredging of the harbor and other work associated with that. That's a project that we last dredged probably in, actually, I have no idea what time that was, many years ago. And it would seem to me that, given typical storm activity and just other sort of fill-in rates, that we're likely to need another dredging at some point in the near future. So I think it's really positive that the Corps of Engineers is putting up this money to try to prepare for this future dredging activity. And we're going to have to do a lot of work in order to ensure that the harbor, when it needs to be dredged, does get the probably four to five million dollars that it will need to actually do that work. I also know that in the past that you've had some issues with where to dispose of the material. So I'd like to look into that a bit more and see what kind of impediments that may pose for the next dredging cycle, because that was a problem in the past. Last but not least, I want to mention one other piece of good news was the sales tax decision by the Supreme Court, where they've determined that the old 1992 ruling is no longer valid and that states can tax out-of-state, or, excuse me, mostly online retail now. And so I would assume that California will be quickly passing its own law to put this into place. I really do not believe that the federal government will step in and pass a law that will mandate how states should do this. They will simply let states do it on their own. And I think it's up to the state of California to hopefully pass some of those funds down to you all locally. We'll see how that goes. But I do want to note that that was obviously a positive decision. And there's a host of other issues I do hope to talk with you all about later today, but I did want to provide you with that public update and appreciate, again, the renewed commitment to your efforts in Washington. And if I can answer any questions, excuse me, please let me know.
Supervisors, any questions at this time? Supervisor?
Greg, congratulations on your move.
Thanks.
Can, this board often refers to PILT, P-I-L-T, and I'm going to take a wild guess that most of you don't know what the hell we're talking about. So, payment in lieu of property taxes, which are lost because the federal government expanded its world in Delmar County. So are we up to date on PILT? And what's the status for future memorialization of this funding, that we get some of our money back?
Yeah, so payment in lieu of taxes, you're right, PILT, has not been as much of an issue over the past two or three years as it traditionally has been. It's been a fight over the years, but thankfully, it's continued to get its appropriations every year. So this is where we get really complicated. The SRS and PILT programs function in fairly similar ways, but they're very different. One, PILT, is annually appropriated. The other, secure rural schools, is authorized on a multi-year basis, and then they're funded differently typically. Having said that, PILT now is sort of an every-year battle, whereas SRS is one of those things that kind of comes and goes every couple of years. PILT has been funded at relatively robust levels over the past several years without much need for a big fight, quite frankly. In years past, it was more of a fight, but more recently, it's been less of one. So it is fully funded for FY '18, which is the current fiscal year. And we think that there's strong congressional support to continue that funding in future years.
Yeah, where we run into problems, Greg, is really at the state level. And the governor's budget generally excluded those type of payments back to the county for properties like Pacific Shores and the other wildlife areas. Supervisor?
Thank you. Greg, you mentioned that we should be giving SRS a rest. And basically, I can see that it's funded 2016 and 2017, but we don't have any funding going forward, 2018, 2019. So what kinds of things can we do to ensure that that funding is going forward?
Well, remember that SRS payments are always made in arrears by at least a year, so that by, even though they're backfilling past years, they're payments that really would be made now and then for next year. So I understand what you're saying, but it, in real terms, you're right, but at the same time, the payments are made later, and they're always made after the fact. So it's sort of still projecting payments for the future. Having said that, what can we still do? I mean, I think obviously it's important to talk about the importance of SRS, and you can certainly do that while thanking your delegation members for the work that they've done to date. But people also, there are a lot of issues, obviously, in Washington they deal with and they handle. And it's nice to let people just breathe for just a moment and recognize the appreciation that you all have for the work that they've done to this point, as opposed to simply say, "What have you done for me lately?" You know, which is too often heard in Washington. So I'm just, I'm encouraging you just to, even six months, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. We really appreciate it. We wouldn't be able to do X, Y, Z without this money. Here's all the great stuff we're going to do with this money. And, you know, we'll talk to you next year about how we need the program to continue and why it's so important to us."
Great. Greg, I'm hoping we could expand a little bit upon something that the state of California has taken a great deal of action on this year and really done a 180 from years and years and years past, specific to fire and resiliency. I'm curious what kind of momentum that you see happening within the U.S. Forest Service, specifically at the federal level, and if you've seen any traction specifically to step up management of our national force, and what are you hearing amongst the representatives back there?
Yeah, you know, obviously, within Congress, there continues to be a drive within the House, particularly, to do more active management. I haven't seen that reflected yet in any substantive actions by the Forest Service that I'm aware of. There's been no wholesale focus on changing the dynamic that, again, that I've seen. You know, interestingly, there's a committee hearing, I think, today in Washington, or maybe tomorrow in Washington, on impacts of closing forest roads, for instance, across the country are having on local communities. And to me, that's something you all have been dealing with now for a decade, if not longer. And I bring that up as a, you know, as sort of just to highlight the lack of action on some of these things, regardless of the discussion and even the political changes that we've had in Washington.
I want to make sure that the discussion moving forward is not lost. To a certain respect, with this kind of energy from the state of California specifically, and the amount of money that the state will be throwing at it, those dollars are really focused on public lands owned by the state. And with Delmar County, the majority of land being within the National Recreation Area, some 600-plus thousand acres, our biggest threats come from that, that public land that is associated with the federal government. So even if we get some consistent pushes with those vast resources that will be coming from the state to do fuels-type management and other fuel breaks that protect our community, we really need to start focusing on those federal lands and how the feds are going to help push this through. We've heard from our forest supervisor, who's new to this area, a real willingness, which is new from past forest supervisors, to address these issues. He's gone through fire year after year in the districts that he's been working. My hope is that he could have some support, financial support, to address those issues here on our forest. With the Checkco Bar Fire we had last year, that pretty much wiped out many of the communities in Brookings and threatened our border several times, and we got lucky with a change in wind direction. I don't want to see that happen here. We've been threatened far too many times within action on the federal government's part. And any message that you could help us carry on our next visit and appropriately direct, that would be terrific.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. I'm not really familiar with the additional money that California's investing in this, which I think is great. It might be helpful for you all as you become, as you actually see what they're doing and the plans that they're implementing. If we could get almost some case studies or some success stories about the kinds of benefits that these activities are having for the forest's health, maybe we can take those stories and bring those back to Washington. So I don't know about the timeline for implementation of the money that you've described, or how quickly we might see some results or benefits from those projects. But, you know, if we can package that stuff together and then get that information to your delegation in Washington, it could prove powerful and to greater, larger audiences in Washington as well. I think we need to be able to show that the activities, I think, that you're describing aren't necessarily going to have an overly negative impact on the environment and yet are going to provide substantial benefits for, you know, related to fire activity.
Correct, correct. And, you know, Jerry and I could certainly help share what we've learned from CAL FIRE, specifically on presentations. And, I mean, when I say vast resources, I mean it's fairly aggressive on the state's part. They're planning on treating up to 250,000 acres this year with an aggressive tract to treat 500,000 acres the following year. That's no small chunk of change, and it's no small chunk of property either to tackle. Supervisor?
Yeah, you know, it's one thing to talk about these high-profile things like catastrophic wildfire and what they're doing to manage those. But, you know, on the, seems to be on the lower priority list, where we're talking about the National Recreation Area, we've got an issue with potable water in some of the campgrounds. You know, when Congress made this designation of a National Recreation Area, there was no commitment to keep funding it. So they basically left us high and dry. They put this overlay of restriction on the land and say this is a recreation area and then, and no funding to back it up. So the campgrounds continue to degrade, and, you know, people are put out by not being even able to have potable water, just basic necessities. So in its, you know, that's pretty low on the priority list. I understand that. But that's the kind of funding or commitment that we get from the federal government at times in our area. They have no problem with taking the land and designating it in certain ways. And the commitment to follow up with that and fund it is a whole, is a whole different animal. So it's disappointing what they've done to us in the past, and we'd certainly like to see a change there.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with Jerry more on that. If you're going to take the land and call it a National Recreation Area, then you better allow us the ability to recreate and regain those tourism dollars that should be utilized within those locations.
I certainly agree and would like to talk about that more.
Yeah.
If I may, one other thing I didn't mention, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows, it still remains, obviously, a high priority of mine and my firm's, but it's just last chance grade. I didn't bring it up. It wasn't because it's not a priority issue. So please know that it hasn't fallen off the radar. I know it's a priority issue. We just are obviously waiting for movement to occur so that we can take action and be successful.
The right, not that type of movement on a geologic scale.
Correct. Prefer not to have that type of movement. That's right.
Well, it, the board in particular has had a great deal of conversations, more importantly, focused on Caltrans. We've heard very clear, concise comments from federal highways at the California level. I know Supervisor Cowan has been running point on a lot of this conversation for the board. The more important pieces of this, and we've heard this very clearly from the folks in California at the federal highways level, that Caltrans will make that decision when it comes how best to spend federal dollars that roll into the state. Our focus has really been with Caltrans at the state level to make sure that it continues to be a high priority even as we move through new directors in the state. We spent a great deal of time, three weeks ago, with Lori Berman, who's the new appointment to the head of Caltrans. We don't know how long she'll be in office, but it doesn't mean that we'll stop our collective energies in focusing her in the right area. They'll be here with us in July and having another community town hall meeting specifically to address what's gone on to date. They've really stepped up their actions to a certain extent in informing the community on what is happening, and more importantly, in a transparent process. The amount of money that's flowed in from the state just to start projects has been unprecedented to a certain extent, both on the geologic side and the biological side, which we know will take some time and a lot of energy. But more importantly, it is progressing, and that's really good for us to see.
Good. Just didn't want to leave it unsaid.
No, we know you haven't forgot. We know you haven't forgot. All right. Well, we appreciate your time, Greg. Looking forward to visiting with you more today.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on with board reports at this time. Supervisor Berkowitz, please kick us off.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to defer to Supervisor Gitlin for this kickoff.
Okay.
On the comments.
Please.
Well, mine's a brief one. First of all, taking care of my napkin at personal level. My spine is fusing well. And I'll be starting occupational and physical therapy very shortly. I'm pleased to say that I got a good report from UC San Francisco Hospital on that. Met with CODA enforcement the last couple of days ago to identify a blighted area, which situates both on county and private property. It's Hambro's property off U.S. Highway 101, near Citizen Stock Road. So our PLATE program, Take Part Out of Blight, lots of partners, Interfaith Council, Northern Knights Car Club, Team Walmart, Team Home Depot, will be participating in abating a really ugly site behind the bushes that you don't see, but there's lots going on down there and cleaning that up. And of course, the challenge comes in trimming back some of the overgrowth brush, and that's a very complicated issue that is not easily said. You would think it would be normal to cut something back, and it grows back, but not how the state and Coastal Commission deals with that. So we'll clean it up, but it still provides a very open, a very closed area for those folks who have continued to live this lifestyle and come in and make an area not so pretty. So we're working on that, about having that area cut back. Synagogue has a new rabbi. His name is Steve Berman, retired, coming down from Grants Pass, Temple Be Shalom, so welcome to the community. Met our advisory board meeting, Pelican Bay State Prison Advisory Board, and we toured the new D unit, which is to be the former secured housing unit. Lots of interesting things going on at Pelican Bay State Prison, and I think the count is somewhere in excess of 2,700 inmates and a very low number of, the high turnover, there's going to be more coming out, and there are at least 15, I think it's up to 18 different programs, which incentivizes those who are incarcerated at Pelican Bay to burn off some of their time. So again, those folks are coming out and hopefully not to recidivate. And I think that's my report. So if you'll excuse me, I have some medical testing to do now, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can probably tell, my voice is starting to go, so I'm going to have a fairly brief report. On June 13th, I held a conference call with the National Association of Counties Public Land Steering Committee. We're promoting the $500 million bill, PILT Full Funding Bill, for the, in the House. NACO has asked me to join the group at the Healthy Communities Roundtable when I'm in the National Annual Conference in July. They've also asked me to attend the Achievement Awards Luncheon while I'm there. We held numerous meetings at the daily town hall meeting. Topics discussed were SB 930, progress on the new and updated legislation concerning the 2018-2019 Secure Rural Schools and Communities Bill, and the attendees' wish list for items to be included in the county's upcoming budget. Attended the grand opening of the Fernbridge Tractor Company. It was a great success, with many people who were originally skeptical of this business being here, now saying it's the kind of business that we need for this county. And I attended the monthly meeting of the Crescent City Delmar County Chamber of Commerce, where we where we discussed the upcoming 4th of July event and of course, the ever-popular county chip bingo. Also attended a meeting of the Republican Central Committee. And lastly, I'd like to express my welcome to Greg Burden for being here today. All right, it's always a pleasure to see him and give us an update on what's going on in Washington, and that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Cowan?
Thank you, Chairman. Felt like I had a crazy busy two weeks, but not a whole lot of meetings. We had a solid waste meeting, still talking about recycling and the problems that we're having in the community. There was a mattress, free mattress drop-off last weekend, hopefully most, or on the 16th, hopefully a lot of people use that, so we won't be seeing them around town. Visitors Bureau meeting, we went over the budget and just our priorities for the upcoming year with our new marketing company that we hired. I'm really excited about what they have coming out. As a business, or as a business owner in this community, I can honestly tell you that tourism is alive and well. It's been really extremely busy the last month. Our summer at the restaurant started sooner and has gotten so much busier than we were last year. So that's really, really good. I think that with the new marketing firm we have going as well, it's just going to be a good summer all around for everybody. Along with Supervisor Hemmingson and Dave Finnegan, we had airport interviews this past week. Will be having an airport meeting tomorrow to make suggestions and recommendations for a new airport manager, so I'm looking forward to getting that. Like I said, I had, actually had a few meetings with some other constituents, some over the phone, some one-on-one. It seemed like a busy week for that, the past week. A lot of constituents are reaching out, which is good. On a personal level, I became a grandma again. My oldest, my foster son, had a baby girl, so we welcomed Aria Angeline to the world a couple of weeks ago. I love having the grandkids around. That's why I'm here, you know? It's about the children, it's about our community, it's about family, and it's about making Delano County a place where they all want to live and raise their families and go to school. So anyways, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the, I attended my granddaughter's moving up ceremony. She's now going to be a first grader, so she's moved from kindergarten to first grade, a big move. I filled in for Chairman Howard on agenda review. That's why everything is moving along so nicely.
I was wondering why we were doing so well today. Thank you Supervisor Hemmingson.
You're welcome. Had an RCRC meeting, a lot of the discussion was over, well, we continue to discuss about tree mortality in California. It's a big issue. I don't know what they're up to, like 130 million trees that are dead or dying. Now they're changing, they're changing the name of what this is. Instead of the Tree Mortality Task Force, it's going to be something else, but there's going to be an opportunity for counties to be involved, each individual county to be involved, and they've created a new position. This position is going to be called the Senior Advisor of Forests. So there's going to be a lot of opportunities, I think, including, you know, forest management, of course, but then, you know, some biomass, there may be some biomass dollars. So a lot of things to do with forests, the whole, you know, the whole state budget, there's a lot of things in the state budget about forest, forest health. You know, the state budget package remains incomplete. There are a number of remaining budget trailer bills awaiting action, including the measures pertaining to cap and trade allocations, you know, to address disaster response, emergency operations. There's a lot of things going on. PILT on the state level is going to continue to be funded, even though our allocation is not what it used to be. It's still something. There's an additional $96 million for wildlife prevention and forest health. There's a one-time investment of more than $700 million in mental health and homeless. There's the $134 million to counties upgrading voting systems. A lot of stuff going on. In RCRC, there's a new Chief Economic Development Officer, her name, her name is Barbara Hayes, so that's kind of a new direction as far as economic development. So we'll have contact now, a contact person now that we can talk about economic developments. Should be a good thing. We had some discussion on the Calpers hardship policy, which really impacts especially rural counties on our budget, and I'm sure that's, you know, going to be discussion that we're going to be having in the near future. Also got an opportunity to talk about water issues. Sigma is certainly a problem that we've got with data not being used, or actual data not being used that we've provided. So that's a, that's a pretty big deal on our part. As Supervisor Cowan mentioned, we did have interviews for a new airport director, and will make our recommendation tomorrow to the full board. Had a Smith River Collaborative Meeting. It's been a while since we've had one, but Jeff Marzal, our new district ranger, who I, I'm hopeful that, that he's going to be able to put in place the large-scale management plans that he's been talking about. And as I mentioned earlier with Greg, that the issues, we had an update on the campground, Forest Service Campgrounds, we're talking about Panther Flat and Patrick, Patrick Creek. Specifically, those water systems have issues, different issues, but issues, and they're probably not going to be able to supply potable water this season. So they've had a number of cancellations and, which would normally be a big deal, except for the fact that they said that they've been able to backfill those vacancies with people that have been passing through. So that just puts us lower on a priority, and I'm concerned about that. We had updates on our Little Jones Creek Pilot Project and the Little Jones Reparation Restoration, our NFWhiff Grant, Canopki Creek Project, discussions about the Fire Safe Council and the Fire Safe Plan Update. We had a Trails Update, which we've all heard in different, different venues by Joe Gillespie, got to hear that again for about the fifth time. Talked about travel management and shaded fuel break along the South Fork of the Smith River. And that's about it for me.
Thank you Supervisor. Since our last board meeting was on travel, for most of it, I'll talk about that a little bit at the end of my discussion. As Supervisor Cowan mentioned, we had a Delano Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, where we spent a great deal of time talking about recycling again, and then level of contamination in our recycling and how best to help manage that. I know a committee's been appointed to help deal with some of those discussions on how to better manage that, and hopefully they'll come up with some ideas for our community because the level of contamination in our recycling is problematic, to say the least, when you're trying to dispose of a, a great deal of that recyclable material. Also discussed in, in great deal, our budget and approve that moving forward. Attended a Agriculture Advisory Committee meeting at Delano High School for their FFA program. It's about 130-plus students attending and working in that program. They want to try to get the word out to grow the program in the next couple of years. Definitely something that our local farming community is very active in doing, trying to make sure there's some succession planning and future farmers here within our area to continue on the, the great work here in our county around dairy and other agricultural products. Attended a North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District meeting in Eureka. And then the highlight since the last board meeting was our trip back to Ritsuzen Takada, Japan, at imitation from their city council, and greeted very warmly by Mayor Toba and Chairman Itu upon our visit. Their community has not only fell in love with Crescent City and Delano County, their community really wants to see us prepared for natural disaster. That was the big thing I took away from this trip, to the point where they're willing to spend their resources, not only to make sure we're prepared, they're willing to spend their resources to bring their folks over here to help us be prepared. That's a, a critical thing, but it's a crazy thing when you think about it being so distant. But they share more than just a cultural relationship with us now. They share a link through tsunami activity, and they want to make sure that we don't share some of the same survival, survivor guilt that they have from losing loved ones to a natural disaster. They know now with this relationship more than ever that they want to help contribute to our preparedness and ensuring that everybody in Crescent City and Delano County has the ability to survive if a 45-foot wall of water were to hit us. And God knows, they would come up right to these steps of this building if that were to occur. Are we prepared for it right now? Arguably, we, we are on the recovery side. Probably one of the most prepared areas in the United States is Crescent City, Delano County, and how to react to a natural disaster of that size. We have some of the best folks working on it, good teams. But is our citizens of the community prepared? That's the question we need to continue to ask ourselves. There's some complacency out there, there's a lull between tsunamis. People forget, they tend to become complacent, and us as elected, us as people that create policy for this community, how could we get the level of engagement and awareness up? That's a huge thing, because I certainly don't want to be sitting in this position as chair, and I'm sure Mayor Aaron Score here in our audience today certainly doesn't want to be sitting in his chair as mayor of Crescent City in a disaster like this to occur. And knowing that we couldn't help save a few more lives just by encouraging people to respond. Tsunami tendon co is a phrase they utilize very much throughout their community. It was a phrase that was lost in Ritsuzen Takada, but it wasn't a phrase that was lost in some of the cities further north of RT. It's a phrase that means run, you're, you're on your own, flee to higher ground, folks will follow you. In the community further north, where they practiced it in schools and communicated it very well, there was no loss of life. But in RT, there was loss of life. And to continue to hear the stories about loss of life, it's what really drives it home for the delegations that continue to visit. I know seeing Tony here and his first trip over, first trip out of country, I believe, it really hit everybody extremely hard, this trip. We continued to hear the stories even from a member of their legislature, who's not even representing in that lower house of the legislature, but doesn't even represent Ritsuzen Takada. He represents provinces further south. But he has been an active member at advocating for tsunami preparedness, more importantly, resources and cash flow to the city in order to move out of this natural disaster phase that they've been in in reconstruction. But to hear his stories about a single red backpack that sat in front of City Hall for months without that backpack being claimed, because it's a tradition in Japan, that until a property is claimed, that it will remain there. But when asked, or when he asked questions from folks at City Hall upon his visits, what's the story with this backpack? Why isn't anybody picking it up? The comments continued to be, well, it belonged to this young schoolgirl that was lost. And the reason nobody had picked it up is because her parents perished also, so they left it there, until the disaster was cleaned up. It was very disheartening, but we continue to grapple with this. What I encourage us to do and what us as a delegation and having Tony and the Triple Kit on this, I know he's going to continue this charge and this message, I'm seeing it in the paper every day. We do have energy, we do have momentum, and I would like us to work with the city, and I've spoken at great length to our CEO, Jay Serena, about this this morning. We will create some energy around this and use all these efforts that Ritsuzen Takada has made in this outreach and to help us move forward in being better prepared as a community. I can't see any better way to, to use that love and respect they have shown to us to help us better prepare for what we know is coming to our community sometime in the near future. I thank you for your time today, Supervisor Hemmingson.
Before we go.
Yes, sir.
This is the, and I should have mentioned this earlier in my report, I apologize.
No worries.
This is the second annual rural photo contest put on by RCRC. Last year, we had no pictures that made it to the RCRC calendar. Humboldt County had two, and RCA O, Jay Serena, promised me that that would never happen again, that we would have a picture that would get in there this year. So it's open to, to the public, to the county members, so we would like to see some pictures.
Thank you Supervisor. And you just reminded me, I, I do want to acknowledge and give my condolences to the Wylie family, Kim passed this last weekend, and unexpectedly, at a very young age, and want to recognize the family and give us, give them our love from the county. Thank you for your time, and thank you Supervisor Hemmingson for such a pleasurable agenda today to move us along before noon.
You're welcome.
Look forward to seeing you guys in two weeks.